I have the time at seven o'clock. And so I would like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. And could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Uh Chair Wilkin?
Here. Thank you. Here's we have a quorum. And next on our agenda, let me get it, is um approval of minutes from previous meeting. First, we have February twenty first. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, um. Approved, motion to approve by Mary Alice, second by Chandra. Thank you. Um any discussion for the February twenty first meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are approved. And next, we have the minutes from the strategic goal setting session on February twenty second. We have a motion for that one. And we did have um two changes um that were just including HB and T in one of the presenters and um. I don't remember what the other one was. For clerk or someone else has it on the top of their list.
Uh it wa- it was the addition of the subtitles uh for the first two strategies to reflect uh the additional discussion titles, I guess, um from the format of the meeting.
Yes, thank you. So the root causes of violence and solving violent crime. People were emailed an update on those. Did we have a mo- motion?
A move to approve with noted corrections.
Thank you. By Chandra, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Uh I saw, I heard Jaya first. We're second by Jaya. Um any discussion? Um I'm sorry, I have some already. If Mary Alice, if you wouldn't mind taking the chair for a minute.
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Um I just wanted, I would like to just scratch the line on page two, just the one line that says uh Strategy Two as kind of the overall topic for solving violent crime. Um just because I see that the discussion was organized by root causes of violence, solving violent crime, and then we added public well-being. And I just, I didn't see that we structured it by Strategy One and Two. Um that was what I, you know, had suggested. And that's not the way tha- that the conversation was structured. So I would suggest scratching that one line. So I think maybe um I'll make that as an amendment.
Grace, can I clarify what what you're scratching?
Yes, on page two, um just that one line that says Strategy Two um and enhance and pan- enhance and expand public safety. And just leave it as um root causes and solving violent crime, because that's the way that I understood the conversation to be structured. Charice?
So you want to scratch this because you didn't understand what the what it was under, or because it was a suggestion that you made and it didn't get put that way? I don't understand the difference.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um I find it just factually inaccurate because the agenda that we had and that we operated under was structured under, again, those root causes of violence, solving crime, and then public well-being. And it wasn't structured under Strategy One and Strategy Two.
So I'll take that. Any other uh, any other items for? Okay, I'll I'll like give the chair back.
Okay, thank you. Um so that was an amendment. Wondering if there's a second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yeah, Jaya?
I'm just gonna say that I probably will be voting present because I unfortunately had to miss most of that meeting. So I feel like I can't make an informed uh decision on that particular topic.
Any other discussion? So I think, and feel free to jump in if this isn't correct, that we would vote on the amendment and then vote on the minutes. Does that seem right? Okay. So can we have a roll call vote, please, for the proposed amendment?
Ms. Wu?
Um. No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Present.
Beg your pardon, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, present.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Okay, thank you. That amendment does not pass. And now could we have a roll call vote, please, for the minutes as previously motioned?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Present.
Beg your pardon, I didn't hear you.
Still present.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes for approval. And next, we have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes for tonight? Okay, seeing none. Next is public input and presentations. First, we have a presentation, Contracting with African American Businesses by Patrick Thompson from councilmember CM, um councilmembers Wilkin and Evans. And Chris, is your audio all right for an introduction?
Uh we can try it. If not, you can uh cover me if you will, but I can try it, yeah. So tonight, we will have a ten-minute presentation by Patrick Thompson, the founder of Via Incorporated, a construction company specializing in concrete work. Mr. Thompson has been a longtime activist for our community. Visionaries educating youth and adults began in the early two thousands, mentoring youth with educational and vocational goals. And Via has focused on issues of proper legal representation for the poor, unequal application of the law, mass incarceration, and employment opportunities for minorities and the formerly incarcerated. For the last fifteen years, Mr. Thompson has led a concrete company that employs young men who need the work, the skills, and the pay to lead a stabilized livelihood. Via has begun to open employment opportunities for minority-owned businesses in the city of Champaign and the university. Tonight, Mr. Thompson will lead us in a discussion about the need for the city of Urbana to set goals in awarding city contracts to minority-owned businesses to address the economic disparity in our community. And with that, Mr. Thompson, you have the floor. And if our tech person could promote him to panelist, that'd be great.
So much. Apologies for not having him in in advance. Um but Patrick, whenever you're able, you have the floor.
I see him in the right, right corner there.
Yeah, just have to unmute. Looks like you're in as a panelist.
There you go.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I am here tonight to um, I want um to address the council um in, in a couple areas. Um and this is from um over ten years of conversations and meetings I've had with the city staff, uh mayors, previous mayors, um some of the um, the policies that the uh previous uh uh human resource officer, Ty Rent, we worked on. Um um developing a draft for minority contracting. Um so I will um start my presentation. The first thing I wanted to bring is that um I believe and I would like to see the city hire a director of diversity and economic development. I think that's very important for uh some short-term and long-term um opportunities and goals. Um and this will help build build contracting opportunities with African-American businesses. Now Champagne County, and this is probably just a very low number, but you know, there's over hundreds of millions of dollars coming into the community. You know, into Champagne County. And currently, the state has a thirty percent goal for contracting with uh minority firms. So I believe that thirty percent of all um contracting and um should be allocated to African-American businesses. And if this, with this, you you will see a immediate increase in African-American business ownership. This will bring jobs back into the African-American community. This will create aspirations for African-Americans to start businesses. And it's been he- historical racial discrimination is one of the reasons why you haven't seen ownership of African-American businesses in in industries such as agriculture, banking, financing, advertising, hospitals, pharmaceutical manufacturers, suppliers, service providers, et cetera. So when we drive through our community and we don't see, we don't see any of this, then there's this um belief that this is not possible for us. Now African-American businesses have not had to benefit or inherited wealth, networking, and other opportunities. Now versus their non-minority businesses who have accumulated and transferred wealth over generations and generations. And they do not feel the need or obligation to share or provide their resources to African-American businesses. According to the United States Census Bureau, the African-American population in two thousand nineteen was one point eight million in Illinois. African-Americans represented nine point five percent of ownership of total Illinois businesses. However, the total value of these state contracts awarded to African-American-owned business, businesses by the state of Illinois was less than one percent of the total spend. So as you can see, this need should be a high, very high priority. This has been one of probably the biggest challenges in African-American community is economic development. And if we are going to start talking about diversity, inclusion, we're gonna start working on these issues that relate to all of the social problems that we see, then this has to be on the forefront. We have to, this has to, there has to be a structural change in policies. We have to look at some short and long-term goals, and you cannot do that if you don't, if the city does not dedicate in hiring someone that's going to, that's going to help develop, develop this and continue to um have these discussions and have these um opportunities for us as as African-American businesses. Now, I'm hoping that we could uh uh, you know, continue to try to build on what was worked on a few years ago. Um I thank Chris for um, you know, willing to um take the task and um so and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Are there any questions from council members? Uh yeah, Mary Alice?
Patrick, thanks for coming today. Um I'm wondering if you might share with the city council members the um draft that you're working on with Todd Rent? If you could email that to us so we can take a look at it?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Well, if I could follow up with that. Now, currently, the the these, the, the um, the um the mayor has acknowledged that the uh CDEP program which Champagne has adopted, that you guys are participating in this, this um CDEP program. So that's currently where things are standing. Um so that, that is something that um uh she can supply, she can uh provide to you.
Thank you. Uh yes, uh Diane, would you like to add something?
Uh yes, I asked Carol Mitten to follow up on Patrick's comment about CDEP. She can give you a quick, brief update on what's happening there.
Yeah, that'd be great. Carol, if you'd like to give response to that?
Sure. Um I I think there's a couple different layers to it. One is that we have been, um we have not been tracking the firms that are CDEP, on the CDEP list that we have been doing con- contracting with. And we're collecting that information now. We are also collecting information on minority and women-owned businesses that we have done business with that are not on the CDEP list. And we're going to encourage them to get on the CDEP list. And then we have some other activities that I'd be happy to report on in another time um that uh we're trying to um to build networking opportunities around um some of our capital, um some of our larger capital programs to introduce the smaller subcontractors who might be minority-owned with some of the larger general contractors so that they can work collaboratively. So when um Mr. Thompson speaks of setting um goals, that we're setting realistic goals based on the uh subcontractors that are available for um that given type of project. So I'd, I'd be happy to, um in a couple of weeks, to give you more detailed update on all of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Um Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Thompson for uh his presentation tonight. I just want to emphasize that, you know, every expert I've been talking to about reducing this gun violence says there's three things that are needed. Jobs, jobs, and jobs. So in our uh long-term planning toward uh, you know, reducing the crime and gun violence in our community, we've got to, you know, address this economic disparity and address uh the lack of opportunity for uh African-Americans eighteen to thirty-four. And so I I'm really hoping that we can continue. And I think uh city administrator Carol Mitten for working on this. I look forward to the uh tracking of the data and seeing where we're at and where we can improve. And so um, you know, I I think it's, we we've really got to work on this. Thank you.
Any other uh questions? input? Mary Alice?
Yeah, mine is just a definitional question. So um I'm wondering if the data also tracks Hispanic-owned businesses? I know it's an ethnicity and not a race. And I don't know if that's included in the state's definition or or goal setting. We don't know the answer now. That's fine. I was just curious.
Are you asking Mr. Thompson or are you asking me?
I'm asking anybody who might know the answer to that.
The, the um, um that, yes, uh Hispanics, Asians are included in that um um, that segment of that um, um uh minorities, they are considered a minority. So any uh, um those demographics are in that, in those are in that minority. Now, there's currently a project that is out, that had, that the city of Urbana has out that has no goals at all currently. And it's, and it's a uh resurfacing project that has no goals. Um and so the I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit kind of, you know, when are we going to be able to see those goals in the documents put in place? Um because currently they're not there. Um and I think that um was something that was um was indicated that would be included in any future projects coming up in in twenty twenty-two. So um you know, and that's, that's, you know, um that reduces the opportunity for, for, for minority and African-American firms on, on your public work projects.
Thank you. Um I had a point of information question. Could someone please uh tell us what's this program? Is it CDEP? CDEP, is it an acronym? Um just like the name of the program, if uh someone could clarify, please?
It's CDEP. It's C is capital C, capital D, capital A, capital P. It it is um uh it's on the uh city of Champagne website, but it, it, it is something that you guys um currently, or what we were told that, that you guys are participating in.
Thank you. And it looks like um Carol or uh Diane would like to add in on that?
I can, I can tell you what the acronym stands for. It's Champagne Diversity Advancement Program.
Thank you. And uh yes, Reese?
Um with that and piggybacking on that, Carol, could you give me some more information about exactly um what, oh, just, you know, a short summary of what the CDEP um program uh what it does?
So the easiest way to think about it is just that it's a, it's a, it's a list of of contractors who have self-identified in these preferred categories of minority uh business enterprises or women-owned business enterprises. Um it, it's a very simple process to apply, but they have to, they have to do that themselves. Um so for the, for the general public, you can go on Champagne's website and you can see the list of people, uh the contractors and what they do. So not every, you know, there's all different kinds of, of businesses. So some are some are caterers and some, like Mr. Thompson's company, uh lay concrete. So, you know, it's a whole spectrum of, of um services that are, that are available. And, you know, what we aspire to do is, I mean, we, we, um through our arrangement with with Champagne, we are free um through that arrangement to advertise, you know, CDEP as, as a program that we're participating in. They have more staff than we do to, to implement what Mr. Thompson is hoping for and, and Mr. Evans are hoping for for, for um Urbana, which is on any given project. And this is what they do in Champagne. So they'll take a project, um say, a asphalt resurfacing project. And somebody from the um that works on the CDEP program goes to Public Works and says, okay, let's look at the available contractors and set some goals for this project that reflect the contractors who are available that are on the CDEP list. So if there's nobody who, um, let's say, um, let's see what, well, I guess, let, let's just talk about asphalt. I don't, I don't know if there's a, if there's a firm out there um that, that um puts down asphalt that's minority-owned or women-owned. But if there isn't anybody, then setting a goal for that project is, is not, doesn't make sense because y- you know that there isn't anybody out there. And then, and then you have a realistic goal, and then you really work hard to achieve that goal by reaching out and making sure those contractors who are eligible are aware of the opportunity. Conversely, if you have a pro, if you have a project, like there's a um there's a minority-owned firm that does uh streetlight work. And they, there's basically two firms that, that at least is what, the way I understand it, that do almost all the streetlight work. And one's not minority-owned and one is. So for that project, you might set a very robust goal because chances are um, you know, you, you could, you could achieve a robust goal. Now, the other piece of it that I just wanna, since I have the floor and and people seem interested, is it's one thing to set a goal and both, um I don't know how the state does it. Mr. Thompson could perhaps um explain it better. But I, I know what we do and when we set goals and what Champagne does, we set aspirational goals. They're not requirements. And so a, a contractor doesn't have to have that level of participation um if, in order to get the contract. In some jurisdictions, like the one that I came from, Washington DC, there are specific goals and targets that need to be met. And so that's something that, you know, we, we could potentially work towards, but you need a pretty robust pool of contractors um of all types in order to um have that be an effective program. And then the other piece of it is that in some jurisdictions, they um they provide incentives to uh make the, um to help the minority and women-owned businesses be more competitive on a price point.
Okay, um another question that I have. Can I continue, Grace, for a minute? Um so when we have a contract or, or we have uh something that, uh work that has to be done, do these people, do, do companies um not just CDEP, but it, can anybody bid on them? Do they have to bid on them? How, what is the process for that to happen?
We have different kinds of, of contracts, but for a, for like an asphalt resurfacing project, that is, I, we, we include what the specifications are, and then that's, that's basically a price competition. We take the lowest, lowest responsive and responsible bid. Um we have other, like I, I remember very distinctly um when we bid out the stormwater management plan um and also the community safety review is another one where um, you know, we fully expect that people put a team together and, and we set goals for those. So you can get a team member. It's the same, we also did it for the um, the fire station um design uh contract where we, we set goals and then people bring in um partners in order to, in order to meet those goals. So there's different ways to, to approach it. It's a little bit harder, I would say, for um firms, minority firms to be competitive when it, you're gonna hire one person, not a team, and um, and it's a low bid. I think it's, it's more difficult, but we have other contracting opportunities on a regular basis.
Okay, another question I have is basically um the CDEP lists that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, that's open to the public, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
I can send the link around tomorrow if people want to see it.
Okay, so people, I, I can just go online and find it, but people, people um well, I guess what I'm, what I'm interested in knowing well, I guess what I'm what I'm interested in knowing too are is the public able to um uh use that list when they are for personal reasons, you know, like if you want your driveway redone? Um, is that a list that would be available to to the public as well? So that um they it for their own personal stuff that may may need to be done?
If they're interested in promoting um, you know, minority and women owned businesses and they want to go there, there's all the all range of of levels of services and not all like major government contracting by any means. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and we are pushing time for this presentation, so it sounds like there's definitely lots more interest and information and more.
Can I provide one more comment on this? I I think I want to provide a little bit more clarification on the program.
Yes, and I do see Jev's too, but yes, go ahead, uh Mr. Thompson, if you'd like.
So um City Council Herschmidt, so the 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 program, most of the the um business enterprise program, which is called at the state level in the disadvantaged business enterprise, which is uh uh Illinois Department of Transportation, most of these programs have been developed from the federal uh regulations. So C DAP is was, you know, those programs were only able to be established through these through a lot of these federal regulations. The C DAP program provides split goal for minority and women. And it also has a component for workforce. So there's two components to this. There's the contracting, then there's the workforce. And then there's also um in in, for example, if there is, if you know, most of the construction project is not just um they have different other um scopes of work on there. So say, for example, it might be asphalt landscaping, concrete work. Um, you know, other areas where subcontractors, you know, such as myself can participate. Now, many of us contractors, including the larger firm, you know, we all work in this geographical area. So some, you know, we travel, you know, Champagne County, so they everybody's familiar with the program. Most of the contractors are familiar, familiar, most of them, you know, find a way to meet these goals. So it's not it's not s- such that um uh uh the contractors will be um hard to meet the goals. I think one of the the problems, one of the things that we you know, and I've been working on is to trying to get the municipalities and state agencies to take a little bit more ownership in the programs so that so that they are um um, you know, where I think is needed versus um, you know, the um a lot of times they are putting this responsibility back on the larger contractors who don't you know, sometimes feel hey, you know, the need to to meet the, you know, to really uh um 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 you know, meet those goals. So that's so, you know, that is kind of that in a nutshell. And, you know, I would be happy to, you know, to kind of, you know, give you a little bit more, you know, historical information and if, you know, um you can contact me, email me, and I would be happy to to provide that to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Very much. Um, and I will take one more question from Jeb. I just had her hand up.
Thanks. Um, Mr. Thompson, I appreciate the presentation. Carol, I appreciate you taking questions on the fly about the city side of things. Um, I I was curious, uh, so in terms of setting those goals, I understand that's fairly labor intensive, especially for smaller city like ours. Do we not have just more general, I understand obviously lists can change and it would require some regular updating. Um, but is there something that would prohibit us from setting kind of general standards or goals um for when we're issuing contracts within certain, you know, different categories, whether it's asphalt or rather than it being project specific, category specific? That makes sense?
Uh, yeah, no, it it does. Um, I I just don't think we've gotten to that point yet. Um I think this is a good conversation. We're we're, you know, we're not opposed to it. It's it's an evolving topic area for us.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it seems like that might be more feasible for for us versus Champagne.
Right, uh, thank you. Uh, yes, thank you for more.
Two quick things. One, when we do development agreements for specific projects, we have set aspirational goals for those. And two, the city does pay five thousand dollars. So we've invested into the C DAP program with Champagne. So we pay the city of Champagne to utilize the list and work with the list. So we we do have a commitment there.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'll wrap it up for our presentation. Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson, for coming. And it definitely sounds like uh there's general interest in learning more and having more conversation on that. Uh, next we have public input. If members of public would like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom. And uh top of the list, I see Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
I just unmuted myself. Is can you hear me? I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I said, my God. Okay, uh, that uh I just have to say something about that presentation. Uh, and I thank uh 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 Mr. Chris and Mr. Chris Evans and Ms. Wilkins uh for allowing Mr. Thompson uh to come on and talk about this. And I think Mr. Chris had said something earlier about hiring and all. But uh, for an example, the two million dollar capital improvement project dealing with infrastructure and all, that is now. So uh, I think this is very timely because when Mr. Aaron Ammons was on City Council, we were coming personally every week. He worked diligently on seeking to get the city to do something about this problem. Um, and it is a big problem, and I agree. Uh, it's so important to to uh have a director of diversity and economic uh uh uh, I think director of uh diversity and economics, something, something. I can't remember what he said. But uh uh, I think that's important because then we are committed. Mr. Aaron Ammons used to talk about this. Bishop and I was talking about this all the time when this uh uh two million uh uh infrastructure project came about for health, safety, equity, and all of that. How many uh uh women, of course, but African American and other minorities gonna get part of the pie? Even going to school through this SWIFT program that we've been talking about all the time. If they don't have the uh uh people that they need uh uh for the program that uh he mentioned, like um uh uh putting down uh asphalt and all that, send them to school. Send people to school so they will be making two dollars an hour at McDonald's. I guess they got to go some of more. But this is sustainability for our uh 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 men and women, eighteen to twenty five. Uh, thirty five, I think someone mentioned. Uh, this sounded great. Uh uh uh, and we like what we hear heard. But we need to commit now five thousand dollars, you know, that's not no money. Uh, but it's a it's a start. I don't want to sound negative. But we need to put some money into getting minorities. That's what I thought this twelve point nine seven million was for. Trying to help these people and get uh disadvantaged people and all and giving them a leg up. A leg up. And yes, we've been praying and all for what's happening uh uh with the uh 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 the war and all going on over there and then and the refugees that coming over here and had to come over later. I think we should continually help them. But look at what we're doing for them and see a model for the country was built on. The backs of black people. I had to go there during Black History Month and cry and couldn't sleep at night. Remember what my grandmom and grandfather and my dad, when he came out of the military, went through, tore our family up because he started drinking. Because he couldn't get a job and he just fought for his country. And uh my time is probably almost up, but please, you all, think about it. And thank you, uh, Mr. Chris and Ms. Wilton for allowing Mr. Patrick Thompson, who's given so much to this community for so many years. He's an icon because he and Martell Miller started something here in Champagne that the federal government picked up. And they put their lives on the line doing it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Underwood. Um, next on the list, I see Julie Watkins. If you could please uh state your name in case it's not anyone's Zoom name and.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I hope everyone is safe and continues to be safe. I listened to the presentations and public comment last week, and I am concerned that it seems there are some people who seriously believe that a large part of Urbana COVID response funds should be used for constructing a building. I know there are people who need help now to help recover from the effects of COVID for housing, utilities, jobs, and so on. Anything to do with creating a new building with new programs, that's going to take years. So use the COVID response money for people who can't wait. Use the COVID recovery money for people who can't wait. If you use the COVID recovery money for a building, you're saying the people who can wait are more important for the people who can't. You should fund the Wellsness Center another way. Helping the people now who can't wait would send a better message about Urbana values. Um, Urbana voters pass the township tax increase because we care about our neighbors who need help. So please use the COVID funds to help people who are hurting now from COVID effects. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Um, next on the list is Brandy McCoy.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, uh, so in the previous meeting, I set up a change in the UPD use of force policy and questioned its legality. Um, in the most recent two of those three meetings, my comment was a direct question, which didn't receive any sort of answer. Um, so um in my dis argument, I, you know, I spent some time and uh, as it turns out, the the change was legal and simply another example of the lack of opportunity for accountability in our executive branch here in Urbana, but likely just, you know, all across the country. So I wanted to own up to my mistake on that and clarify the information for any other listeners who, like me, were uncertain. And also take accountability for the misinformation that I spread unchecked in these meetings. Um, so yeah, uh, moving on to today's agenda, though. Um, I lived on Auburn for three years when I first moved to Urbana. And uh the need for stop signs there is definitely legitimate. A lot of kids play in the area. Drivers can be pretty reckless. Um, I would even go further to add a stop sign on Smith in that same area. Um, so that's like the widest and highest traffic street in the area, and there's really a significant speeding issue. Um, and again, there are kids playing all over the playing all over the place. So um uh, that that would be my additional suggestion, um, if this were to ever be, you know, followed up uh on. But as is, I appreciate the proposed efforts to increase traffic safety for the area. Um, I also look forward to seeing plans to install streetlights in currently unlit neighborhoods. Um, if my research uh does me right, uh, from this morning, I believe there are funds allocated the capital and and for fiscal year twenty twenty three for that. So kudos for having that on the board. Um, I was just wondering if there's any potential for it to be addressed um a little bit sooner, since this has been a longstanding issue for those neighborhoods. Um, so could or will fiscal year twenty twenty two provide a jump start on that in any capacity? Uh, my question. And finally, uh, I appreciate the focus on affordable housing with respect to private activity bond issue. Um, affordable housing is a topic that rarely feels controversial in terms of our need in Urbana. So thank you for that. Um, I would appreciate clarification, if possible, of where residents could find information about uh the Illinois Assist MCC program specifically. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Um, next on the list is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, uh, my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am speaking to you tonight in uh the capacity is campaign lead of no hammer and shut offs. A zero dollar all volunteer uh coalition of fifty five member organizations and counting spread throughout the state and adjacent states. We now have six congressional candidates who have signed on to our pledge to stop utility shut offs by passing the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act of twenty twenty one, which again, uh Congressman Rodney Davis had stated that that was going through the Finance Committee as of the end of January. Legislation takes time. We're going to be continuing to do outreach to congressional candidates to increase the amount of support. We've also been talking to staff of numerous campaigns who are advocating internally. So again, I would like to thank the city of Urbana's role in fostering the resolutions that have been passed. Um, although the resolutions that were passed uh by this body did not mention the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act. Uh, this was the first body in twenty twenty one to pass a resolution after what could best be described as a fraught dispute between related parties. That being said, I want to pivot to the um presentation. I thought it was really well done. Uh, we do need to have a dedicated focus. This isn't something that just happens. We have systemic issues stacked up against black and brown community members. That doesn't just happen. We need to have an acknowledgement of that as the resolution that uh Sharice helped author, uh, for example, points out. Um so we need deliberate action to counteract that too. Now, the Support for Workforce Training Program is one way to do that, and we are continuing to organize in that direction, as you probably know. And I think that it is good to have a dedicated focus on more black citizens. I would also like to suggest more black union workers. Now, in the city, uh, for example, um, it is normal for there to be um a decent density in that regard. But what about the private sector? What can the city council do in that direction? How could one, for example, connect the Support for Workforce Training Program? Which specifically is part of a statewide program called the Workforce Equity Initiative, which has a seventy five percent black student enrollment rate. How can we connect that program to good union jobs? And how can the city provide such a role? Good for thought. Got to get to another meeting. Have a good one.
Thank you for your input. Next is Angel Johnson. Angel, it looks like you're on as a panelist and just need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Okay, good evening. How are you? Um, yes, I am so happy for um Mr. Pierce for addressing that issue. That is a big issue here in Champagne, Urbana. Okay, and thank you so much for that. Now, um, I'd like to address a issue. And I have a problem, okay? We have requested several times, have emailed you, uh, Mer Marlin, and we have spoken with Sharice Hersey, uh, Stephanie Mann, and Sheila Dotz, and Don Emmer. November the tenth, twenty twenty. Dear Mer Marlin, I am writing to request Dear Mayor Marlin, I am writing to request information and your assistance with purchasing an empty lot or space for Lincoln Square Mall. The reason for my request is due to COVID-19 that has caused me to rethink my business. I am requesting your help so I can continue my vision and provide our children with the knowledge to grow. The name of our two businesses is Precious Daycare and Angels Youth Center. Both are important pillars of our community. That seeks to improve the lives of our children and young adults. My team and I would like to request a virtual meeting with you. The goal is to show our commitment to helping our community and children. This was in 2020. We've been at the city council since 2014. If you go back in your records, presenting the same thing. We have a daycare and youth center in our home. We have given to the community time and time again, over and over again. Well, since the COVID hit, we have asked for help. You getting us help. Someone help us. We never received help to open up our business outside of our home. We're LLCs. We're licensed. If you want to go to even the state of Illinois, we have all our books in order and they've been in order, and we also pay taxes. This is unnecessary. I'm a Black African American woman. We have several businesses. Our Black family. We're all Black. We can't take that color back. We're proud to be a Black African American family with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. How is it that you guys want to take our deal and steal it and open up the same youth center that you denied me for and say, we're not interested in no youth program right now. We don't have room for, we're not interested in no kind of community outfit or buildings or nothing like that. Okay? How are you gonna open up Wellness Fitness Center? I'm nonprofit. Plus, I'm for profit. How are you gonna open that up and give them 14 million? Where's my 14 million? It costs us about the same. For a new lot, we've been asking for. You have this letter. We emailed it to you, Mayor Marlin. We addressed you. Yes. November the 10th, 2020, and you're gonna come up with this? Come on, be for real. We've been with you since 2014. Go back and do the paperwork. All of it listed. We came on your floor and presented this. And we have another business, L-North Catering Care, and you guys told me you didn't start a new business. You don't even have money for me. Send me over to on Fallow Road and say, look at that Mexican building and see if you want that, but we don't have money for you. So I went around and did my search, my research, right? And it was a lie. You have opened up several businesses. I want mine. And I'm a homeowner, and my taxes in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. And next on the list is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oops, sorry. Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Good evening, City Council. First, I would like to know why City Council has not said or done anything regarding Urbana Police Chief Seraphin's actions of sneakily removing the requirement for CPRB to review all TASER displays from the Police Department policy. This issue has been brought up repeatedly at past council meetings, and it looks like you guys are just ignoring this issue. This issue is also clear in Councilwoman Wu's 2021 resolution about the use of force policy and de-escalation. In this resolution, it says that all changes to the use of force policy should be presented to council. I don't know. I guess the public was right all along that Councilwoman Wu's resolution was just superficial talk and no action. So I would like to know what you guys are going to do about it. I was quite surprised tonight to hear from a previous commenter that it was legal for the CPRB to stop reviewing TASER displays. I hope you guys can comment on this because, as far as I know, that requirement is still in the Urbana CPRB ordinance. And even though the CPRB did vote to stop the TASER display reviews, this is, I don't think this is legal, as only City Council can make ordinance changes. Also, how is it legal that the chief of police can change the laws that are made by City Council? Was there a close meeting somewhere where this law was changed? Again, I hope that you can comment on this, and if I'm wrong, please clarify. Next, I have a question from Mayor Marlin. Where is the Advisory Committee on Public Safety and Policing that you presented and announced to placate the public after Urbana Police Officers battered an innocent Urbana resident? Mayor Marlin, is this another one of your false words instead of false words to calm residents down instead of having actual meaningful change? City Council, what are you going to do about the civilian police complaint form that still retains illegal language such as requiring the complainant to be physically present and requiring the complainant to sign a sworn statement? The complaint form also threatens prosecution to the fullest extent for false allegations, which is a violation of the FOP contract that you guys approved. Also, there in many places on the city website, there are instructions on how to file a police complaint. And this information also tells the complainant to bring the ID, and it mentions things like notary requirements. So my big question is, why is Urbana still having these hurdles to residents filing police complaints? I thought that the goal was to try to minimize hurdles. And it seems like we've been bringing up CPRB issues for probably about two years, and we are still back to step one or even a few steps back. So I hope you guys can comment about this. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. And if anyone else would like to address the committee from the public, please raise your hand on Zoom.
Grace, I have a one from, that was emailed, whenever.
Awesome. Thank you. I was gonna ask if you had one or your hand was still up. I'm not seeing any active members of the public, so why don't you go ahead and give us yours, please?
Thank you. It says, Dear City Council, my name is Sarah Nixon. I would like to commend the efforts of Ms. Ashley McLaughlin at the Regional Planning Commission, who I understand is managing the process of gathering public input related to Urbana's ARPA funding spending. Ms. McLaughlin has expended time and effort on two occasions, most recently earlier today, to hear and respond to my concerns about Urbana's lack of comprehensively coordinated services and resources for child and adult victims of court system failures, law enforcement failure, and failure of social service agencies to work together effectively to address family violence and related issues, which encompass the nexus of serious issues including child abuse, partner abuse, mental health injuries, substance abuse, poverty, homelessness, legal ramifications, too frequent failures by law enforcement and the courts, and more. I initially spoke with Ms. McLaughlin a month ago about my concern on behalf of survivors in the community of all ages, genders, and cultural backgrounds that Urbana and Champaign, indeed Champaign County as a whole, critically needs a family justice center, a one-stop-stop center that provides under-one-roof wraparound services for victims of family violence. Ms. McLaughlin has been responsive and helpful and has taken the time to give me support and suggestions in my quest to see a Champaign County Family Justice Center materialize. Appreciate her willingness to engage with the problem, and I urge you all, as the council, to, in turn, please visit the Alliance for Hope International's webpage, www-allianceforhope.com, for detailed information on the philosophy and rationale behind the Family Justice Center concept and to learn practically how Urbana, Champaign, the county can go about planning and establishing one for the community. It's doable, and we need to do it. Thank you again for your time, Sarah Nixon.
Thank you for the input, Sarah. Thank you for sharing, Jaya. And is there any other member of the public that would like to address the Committee of the Whole tonight? He's seeing no further hands. We will move on to staff report. Do we have any staff report tonight?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next then is ordinance number 2022-03-010, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at certain intersections, Oglethorpe Avenue and Rainbow View, Montgomery Street at Rainbow View, Michigan Avenue at Oglethorpe Avenue, and Michigan Avenue at Abercorn Street and Michigan Avenues at Montgomery Street. And do you have a presentation on this?
Shannon Branick here, city's traffic engineer. This is actually going to be my last official act as a city's traffic engineer, as my last day at the city is May, or March 18th. So I get to bring you guys some stop signs for my last presentation. I actually have a second one after this that is not stop sign related. So this is very similar to the one I previously brought to City Council and Committee of the Whole. Same situation. We have some uncontrolled intersections that the regular rules of the road are not being followed, and people aren't treating them as yields. So that is pretty much how we decide it's time to put up a stop sign. My job is to figure out which one is the major street, which one's the minor street. The minor street is the one that ends up with a stop sign, and the major street gets the through. So this particular situation came about through the Equal Form. Some members who live in Savannah Green were concerned over some stop signs missing, primarily in Abercorn and, I'm sorry, not Abercorn, Montgomery and Rainbow View and Oglethorpe and Rainbow View. So since I was already in the area looking at their traffic concerns, I expanded to all of Savannah Green and found all of the uncontrolled intersections that this was happening at. So which resulted in the five stop signs you see in the ordinance. They're also on your map. Let me look at the map real quick. Yes, just make sure I'm at. Basically, the County Traffic Commission via the Equal Form, Traffic Commission voted unanimously on putting new stop signs. We also had the submitter of the Equal Form. She was there, as well as another member of Savannah Green. Both were very much in support of the stop signs, and so we proceeded to move forward and bring it to you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions from committee members? Yes, Mary Alice?
I'd make a motion if there's no questions.
I have a question. I think I'm allowed to ask as chair. Is that right, or do I pass it?
Informational, yep.
I was just wondering if you were listening earlier that it was mentioned in public comment about possibly one on Smith Road. I'm not sure what certain intersections, but I didn't know if you had an input on that thought.
So in general, and this says on our traffic commission page on the city website, stop signs are not used for speed control for a variety of reasons. The two primary ones being if the stop sign itself is not warranted, people tend to ignore them. When you ignore a stop sign, you blow through it. And you don't want a pedestrian being crossing, thinking the car's gonna stop, and the person blows through it. The other reason is if you put an unwarranted stop sign to try and control speeding, what happens is people speed between stop signs, actually making the problem worse. So they go real fast, screeching halt, real fast, screeching halt to the next one. So they're not, I mean, this is through not just Urbana policy, this is traffic policy pretty much in general through the MUDCD, FHWA. Stop signs are not speed control. So I did do a speed study on Smith Road. I want to say last Fourth of July. And there were instances of speeding recorded by the speed trailer, to which I reported those to UPD like we usually do. And then it turns into a monitor situation, see how things progress. Right now, there I can't say there was not a need for a full intersection study, but right now, with having done the speed study and having observed the area, we are still the monitor period, so it's not a next step yet. Not ruling out as the next step in the future, but currently it is not a next step.
Thank you. And that's typically how the progression goes. And then I was wondering what, or if the city does have tactics for slowing traffic down then, besides stop signs?
So right now, the city does not have an official traffic calming policy. It is one of the things that I have been working on. And I do have an outline for one, part of it drafted. And I'm gonna try to get as much of that done the next two weeks as possible to give to our city engineer. So hopefully, he can help advance it. And I know a lot of the submissions for equal have also requested traffic calming. And we need to get this in place first. We do actually have a methodology. We don't want to just start doing things with no plan, because that actually comes back to bite the entire city in the future. So we want to make sure everything is lined up so that we can try to implement traffic calming and do it in an organized fashion. There are, right now, I think I've fed 40 cities in my case studies that I'm using their civilian population, university towns, ones that make sense to compare Urbana to.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, yes, Chris?
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon. In my ward, we have a problem with speeding. And I know, I understand what you're saying, that we don't have a, you know, we don't use stop signs to calm speeding, but we have little kids going, elementary school kids going to Lille school and crossing a street that needs, you know, to be safe. So my question is, does the consideration of small children crossing a street come into play about placing stop signs?
So when you go to, look for either a stop sign or a traffic signal, they're called warrants. There are eight warrants that you go through to determine whether or not a signal or a stop sign is warranted. Now, some of them don't apply, like a lot of them, one of them is, is there a railroad crossing nearby? So that one's automatically ruled out. There's very few streets in Urbana where the railroad one comes into effect. Primarily warrants one and two are what we look at, because they're the ones that tend to say yes, no. They're the guiding ones. Those deal with vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, and oh, of course, I don't have rightfully, but basically pedestrian and vehicle traffic. So pedestrians are counted, and they are, you know, included in whether or not a stop sign or signal is warranted. So sometimes also, like, I had one I studied where I was actually expecting a lot of pedestrian traffic. I was for sure the pedestrian traffic was gonna throw it into the realm of needing a traffic signal. There was no pedestrians in my counts. There was marginal pedestrians, but there was enough vehicular traffic to warrant adding control. So it is, and they also do use a little bit of engineering judgment where, say you're close to the warrants, you could actually say, you know what, we're close enough, let's add it. So, but it is a, you have to study each intersection individually. You can't just blanket, say, yes, it means warrant one, two. So it does require pedestrian counts, vehicle counts, all that gets analyzed and put through the warrants, so. Pedestrians are definitely part of the situation. Especially if it's a school zone. I did have the campus school for girls, which is on Weber Street, just south of Maine. Not a lot of traffic. Vehicle traffic was never gonna warrant any kind of school zone, but because the children crossed from the school to the church for lunch every day and back, that them crossing the street warranted putting up a school zone.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Shannon? Mary Alice, were you still interested in a motion?
Sure. I'll move ordinance number 2022-03-010, ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at certain intersections for Oglethorpe Avenue at Rainbow View, Montgomery Street at Rainbow View, Michigan Avenue at Oglethorpe Avenue, Michigan Avenue at Abercorn Street, and Michigan Avenues at Montgomery Street to the City Council on the Consent Agenda.
A second.
Thank you. Recommended to Consent Agenda by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Yes, Shandra?
I just want to say thank you to Shannon for her work on Traffic Commission. It's been a pleasure to sit with you on that commission and all the thoroughness you bring to your reports to council. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I had one, too, if Mary Alice wouldn't mind taking the chair for a minute.
I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I agree. Shandra knows much more being on the commission with you, but I also wanted to echo a thank you for the preparedness and the presentations and the thoughtfulness and, you know, very interested in a draft that you put together. So thank you for the initiative on that. I'm very interested in how we can make that more of a kind of policy and comprehensive kind of look on traffic control. So thank you for that, and I appreciate you doing that draft and passing it along.
Thank you.
All right. I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Thank you. And any other discussion? Then clerk, could we please have a roll call vote for moving this to council consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you everyone. And our next item is Resolution Number 2022-03-026R, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a DCEO grant for Nevada Street Lighting Project. Do we have a presentation from community development, I believe?
It's actually going to be me. I think Sheila's here too, but I'm taking the lead on this. It's pretty straightforward. The DCEO came to the city, I want to say it's two years at this point, and said, your congresspeople have earmarked some money for you for lighting improvements. And all you have to do is fill out this big pile of paperwork. Unfortunately, due to lack of staff time, it kind of languished. And then the DCEO was very forgiving and came back to us and reminded us to fill out this paperwork, to which thing got handed to me after one of our previous engineers had left. And they also graciously allowed it to be done as a reimbursement grant as opposed to a grant you get while the project, the project is in process. So the project we were able to use this on was the, make sure I don't get these backwards, the Nevada Street Lighting Project. The project was ready to complete at this point. Everybody didn't pay it out. And basically, I did, I and Sheila and the help of finance filled out all of this paperwork. They went to review the DCEO, which takes three to nine months. It is not a fast process. But we were recently awarded the money and in order to fully accept it, we have to bring it to committee of the whole. And have you guys thought on it? And I will just add, I am currently working on a second round of this that we also were graciously informed by the DCEO that we have another $93,000 we can accept for another lighting project, which will be the Matthews Street Lighting Project. And I'm working on that paperwork actually this week. So. That is not our discussion right now. I'm just preparing you. You will see this again. So.
Thank you. And we'll take questions. I see James.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could give us a little more detail on the purpose of the grant, of why, you know, I'm happy to have this funding for something we've already done and get reimbursed for it. I think that's great. I'm just kind of curious, what were they trying to accomplish by offering these grants?
It's for their econo, or I'm sorry, the energy savings program. So with the change out of the streetlights in the various streets, we're putting in more modern lights that are more cost effective, more environmentally friendly. They use LED lights, the bulbs last longer. And just overall, it's a, it's an improvement in the lights themselves, but also improve in terms of economic viability and energy savings. So the DCEO is, with the help of whoever's congresspeople, earmark the money for locations and then you can apply to use it. And so we have applied to use it for the Nevada Street and then the future Matthews Lighting Project.
Let me take it, we've been doing this kind of upgrade in the campus area already. We were, we were looking at these, these lights to be upgraded in this energy efficient way.
Yes, the, the lights in the campus area were particularly old. They were the old concrete pebble poles, which, depending on who you ask, they can be anywhere from 50 to 60 years old, depending on the lights.
Okay, I was just curious how they, how it lined up with the, these particular projects. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
And I believe going forward, just to add for other general information, should this money be earmarked, not in perpetuity, but going forward more, pretty much any lighting upgrade is available. It's not necessarily have to be in a targeted area. It's anywhere the city identifies we need a lighting upgrade for energy savings. So.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking in terms of the, you know, money we've set aside for potentially for lighting projects in underserved areas. And so if we can make that go further by taking advantage of something like this in the future, it would be good to.
Oh, yes, because with the Nevada one, the, what we're getting back is about a quarter of what we spent on the project. So it is a significant chunk. So.
Thank you. Chandra?
I was going to ask, did you know the amount that you'd be getting through the grant prior to the, the start of the project or the application being submitted?
Yes, for some reason, it was put in as $93,000. I do not know why that weirdly specific amount, but that was earmarked for this past one and in the future one.
Okay.
Jaya?
Kind of piggybacking off of what James was saying, could you clarify if this is something that could be used for installing new lights or it's only for the upgrades?
Well, it, I mean, I, I use upgrade and new lights interchangeably. So like all the lights in Nevada and Matthews were completely replaced. The poles were replaced, all the con was replaced. It was a complete replacement of the old with new, modern lights, modern poles.
Sure, sorry, to clarify, I meant like in places where there aren't any lights, like many areas of Urbana where there are no lights at all currently.
That I would have to look into because this is an energy saving. So I think you might have to have removal of existing with replacement, not necessarily putting in brand new.
True. Thank you.
There are other questions? I have a question about, then does this open up a new lighting project? Like if we accept this for the reimbursement, does that free up the similar amount of $300,000 sum for another project?
Only the 93, which I know Tim was working with finance and I'm not quite sure the answer, but like the 93 should go back towards the lighting project in general. So like, you know, say we have, well, I'll just easy number, say our balance is zero. We would now be plus $93,000 in our lighting program. So like it, it basically just rolls back into the pot is what is my understanding. Sheila can jump in if she has the answer. If not, that's okay. But it, it, it doesn't completely pay back all of what was spent in the lighting project. It's just a small reimbursement for a quarter of the project. So. So it doesn't necessarily mean, like, we can't do a full lighting project with $93,000. We need more like $300,000 to $500,000. So it's just a, it's a portion.
Okay, because the $93,000 is the grant amount and the $300,000 is the entire project. Is that right? Covering the whole project. It's just $93,000 that would be available for some other project then. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And like the, the Matthews one is like, oh, I believe it's $550,000. So only 93 of that is reimbursed with when that grand paperwork goes through. So it, it's, it's just a, it's a small token from the state that we can roll forward in other lighting projects, but it in itself cannot pay for a whole lighting project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify something if I could. So without a budget amendment, the money doesn't roll back into the project. And so it's not clear yet whether the, it would be anticipated that we would do a budget amendment unless, and we, we would do a budget amendment if we wanted to spend that money in this fiscal year. Otherwise, it just rolls back into the general fund. And then, and then, you know, as we, as we move forward into the new budget, if we had a project. So it's only if we want to spend it in this fiscal year for another lighting project that you would see a budget amendment to go with it sometime in the future. Just wanted to be clear about that.
See, I was leaving that up to Tim, so I, he wasn't here. I was just like, it was a Tim question. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'd move Resolution Number 2022-03-026R, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a DCEO grant, Nevada Street Lighting Project, to council for approval on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Chandra to put on consent agenda, seconded by Mary Alice Reed. Is that where I heard? Sorry, it's looking down right. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
I just wanted to say that the lights on Nevada Street are greatly appreciated. It's a, it's a block that I walk by every single day. And so I'm really happy to have those lights and I look forward to the ones on Matthews as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I have one, if Mary Alice you wouldn't mind taking chair for a minute again?
I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you again for bringing this. I think that this great opportunity is really great. So once again, thank you, Shannon, for being the one to personally do the work on the task. So thank you for that and everyone else who was a part of it. I think this is great whenever we can get grants and have more energy efficient stuff. And what I, what I feel and I have the sense from others is that also new lighting projects would be a priority, that the replacement and energy efficiency is positive. And then also having a high priority on neighborhoods that don't yet have street lighting. So I think it's promising if that grant money for this upgrade could go towards having new streetlights somewhere else. Thank you. Take the chair.
All right, I relinquish the chair. Back to Grace.
Thank you. And Jaya?
Yeah, I would just echo that. I mean, obviously we have the, the equal projects, but that, although it's, you know, it's an important part of this process, it's not going to cover every single project that needs to get done in, in Urbana. And there are, like I said, many areas, certainly many areas of Ward Four that do not have any streetlights. And while I understand that the $93,000 is not going to cover a whole project, I think, thinking about ways to work towards meeting that currently totally unmet need as we are taking advantage of this opportunity to upgrade in areas that already have lighting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? He's seeing none. Could the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Resolution Number 2022-03-024R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allocation assistance programs, series 2022, from community development. Do we have a presentation on this? Or I don't know if you'd like me to present the next one and present on both of them?
Please.
So then we'll also present Resolution Number 2022-03-024R, resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allocation, IDHA, series 2022.
Thank you. Private activity bond is a tax exempt bond that a local government can allocate towards specific projects. It's not a part of the general fund. It's just the state. Each year looks at the population size and assigns a bond value. And then communities can designate it towards priorities in their communities. So Urbana, the, the value is $110 per capita. And the state of Illinois determined our population for 2022 at 41,724 persons. So that gives us a little over $4.5 million to designate towards specific housing projects. Staff is recommending that we fund the assist program, which offers a tax credit for first time home buyers. And to answer one of the public input questions earlier, that program is marketed through our local lenders. So when someone comes to take out a loan, they direct them towards these programs and help them apply so that they can take advantage of them. I included a map in the packet that outlines the amount of investment for this particular program over the past few years. And then the other question is the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Staff is recommending that we fund them just due to the amount of investment that they've made in our community as well. IDA has invested in Crystalview and Highland Green. They invested, and it wasn't this pot of money, but they invested a lot of rent assistance money, light reduction funding. So they've made a heavy investment into the city of Urbana. The third request that we received for this funding was from the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority. And typically this group has, will reach out to communities so that if we don't have a specific project or something in mind, then they can use that for any, any projects that they have. They have not invested any funding for projects in the city of Urbana. And so that's why staff was, was recommending that we focus on these two programs. So again, there's no fiscal impact. This is just a designation that the state of Illinois will allow the local government to identify priorities for how they want to designate the money. We have to have this bond cap allocation completed by May 1st. And if we don't, then the state of Illinois will designate where the bond cap goes to. So does anybody have any questions?
I saw, I saw Chris first, sorry.
Yeah, thanks Sheila. So just a quick question. Do we have the 4.2 million already? I mean, is it our money?
No, it's not a cash transfer that comes into the city. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's on paper. So the state of Illinois gives us this bond cap authority that we can say of our 4.5 million, how do we want to direct it? And we want to direct it towards affordable housing programs. So it never comes through the city's budget. It never comes through our checkbook. It's something that, that the state of Illinois does. They just allow local governments to set their priorities.
Next, Chandra?
I think Mary Alice was up before me.
Sure, Mary Alice?
I just had a quick question. Sheila, thanks so much for providing all the details of the map and the number of houses. So on the list, there's 129 houses that were assisted and purchased. Do you know what the timeline was for that? How, how many years does that cover?
I believe it was eight years, but I will verify and then send you guys a follow up email.
Because I'm just, I'm trying to estimate how many houses on average do they, do they assist with? And do you know, if you don't know off the top of your head, that's totally fine. But you know, there is, the census does, housing ownership. I'm wondering if you are aware of any relationship between this type of program and the increase of housing ownership in our community?
I think this program definitely makes housing more affordable. And so the way that the tax credit works is when you do your, your income tax at the end of the year, you can take a portion of your, your interest off as a credit. So it's a direct benefit back to the homeowner, which helps, you know, when you, you are a lower income person, do repairs to the home or, you know, invest in a little bit higher value of home, because you've got a little bit more flexibility with that.
So that's a tax credit and not an adjustment to income, it sounds like?
Nope. It's a straight credit. Yeah.
Thank you. Chandra?
Yes. So could you explain the non-targeted areas and the targeted areas? Like what does that mean?
The non-targeted and targeted areas, I will provide you a map with that. It is based on, on census tract, similar to what we do for our community development targeted areas. So there's areas that have lower investment that they're trying to encourage investment in. And so that's why they get the higher amounts.
Okay. And so with the, with the assist program, when you said it's a sort of a tax credit. So when a person is looking for a home, is there a certain price range that that home has to fall into? Because I'm thinking about if it's, if it's sort of affordable home, is giving them money toward a down payment or closing costs? But what about like the mortgage after it's all said and done? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I understand the question. A lot of times, these mortgage credit certificates, they kind of stack up on top of down payment assistance, closing cost assistance, that type of thing, because it is a, a tax credit on your IRS taxes that you do every year. It, it doesn't actually go directly to the home buyer at the time of closing. It comes as a credit in their taxes each year, kind of like the child tax credit.
Okay. And then you said to Mary Alice that the list of um homes was over a course of eight years?
I believe, I believe so.
So how long will um does it, does this funding last? So i- if we decide to invest in the assist program or fund the assist program, how long does that money go for, I guess? Or is there an end date where it has to be spent by?
There isn't an end date, so it, it just rolls over till it's, it's gone.
Thank you.
Jan?
Uh, thank you for this information. It's very, very interesting. Definitely excited to see some opportunities for helping with, with housing in our community. Um, you mentioned that it's advertised through lenders. Looking at the list, um, many, many of these loan amounts are for pretty high, you know, towards that higher end of what, you know, the cap is. And I think for, for many people who are low income, you know, three-hundred-dollar, three-hundred-thousand-dollar home is totally, you know, out of their league. So I, I mean, I, I'm a little bit curious about what, if any, um, impact the city has in terms of helping make sure that folks who maybe are looking ho- at homes that are well under a hundred thousand dollars, um, are even aware that this opportunity exists. Because I feel like there's, you know, we're, we're saying we're going to continue to put all this funding into this program. Not that it's not warranted for folks who might be more middle-class, but it looks like in many instances, we're not actually reaching the folks who might uh really, truly need it. So I'm just curious if you could explain a little bit more about what does that process look like for the lenders communicating with people? And is there any information for folks who might otherwise think that buying a home was outside of their, you know, capability?
Um, well, but it usually ties nicely with the FHA, which is also um geared towards lower-income families. It, it actually is an insurance program so that the lenders are more comfortable loaning to lower-income families. Um, I, I think the lenders, when they stack this up, I mean, if you look at the, the map, a lot of these homes are in our, our community development target areas in the lower-income neighborhoods. So um and I'm looking here, I don't see any loans for three-hundred-thousand. A lot of these are anywhere from eighty-four to
Right, sorry, to clarify, the, the cap was the three-hundred-thousand.
Right, right.
Um, but the, the loans for, you know, closing-related costs or down payments that are tax credit, um, many of them are well over a hundred thousand, so that's
Right.
clarification.
Yes, yeah. And your income is going to um determine how much house you can afford. And so a lot of times, we currently have a down payment program now that um lenders can use in a variety of ways. But they can stack it with this program. They can do it with the Federal Home Loan Bank. They can do it with AIDA's down payment program. So when you start, you know, stacking all of this assistance together, it really makes it more affordable for families, and that's the goal of it. We also attend, staff attends a monthly meeting with our community reinvestment lenders. And these type of programs are designed and talked about in that group each month because the lenders are seeing what the community needs are. Um, so we, you know, we try to design programs to help meet those needs.
Any other questions? Yes, Chandra?
So about the, the Housing Development Authority um project, how many homes have they um developed or acquired and improved within Urbana? Uh, I understand these, these three, um, these three projects, but are there any, you know, individual ones in neighborhoods?
So Illinois Housing Development Authority invested in Crystal View and in um Highland Green. Uh, they've also are looking at tax credit applications for a development on Bradley and Lincoln. Um, the north side there, they're, they're reviewing one now. So um, those are three that I know of off the top of my head that, that they're investing in. The Eastern Illinois Economic Development, they, as far as I've done research on the three and a half years I've been here, I haven't seen where they have done investments in Urbana. They've partnered with the housing authority to do investments in the region, but they haven't done investments within the city of Urbana.
Okay. Um, because you mentioned like blight reduction projects with I-HDA. Um, so I'm wondering, like, i- is that something that happens to existing standing structures, like within neighborhoods? Because I'm thinking about cru- um, improving those, some of the homes that exist that are dilapidated within neighborhoods and just sort of feeling it, filling in um and improving neighborhoods versus building new ones all the time?
Right, right. Um, yeah, the Illinois Housing Development Authority did a blight reduction program, which they, uh, the city of Urbana took advantage of that and purchased and demolished because they were way beyond anything. Uh, but they were a neighborhood blight and they were a hazardous homeless. People were living in there and starting fires to keep warm. And then it was, it was a danger. So sixteen homes were demolished through that. Um, they also partnered with AIDA to do in the abandoned properties program, which allowed us to purchase several properties, but most recently, uh, fourteen-oh-seven Wiley came through that program and we're now transferring that uh unit to first followers and they're going to be using for an affordable housing unit. So they're used in a variety of, of different ways. Um, and Urbana's always, you know, paying attention to see what we best need for the community at that time.
Thank you. Therese?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted some clarif- a little clarification regarding the um, the um, the list of homes in, in the map of where people have been helped. This isn't necessarily people building new homes. Is this also by just purchasing their first home?
Yes, purchasing their first home.
So it, whether it's, it's built or, or just uh purchased from another, from another owner?
Right.
Right? Okay. So basically, the, the amounts that are, are on here then are what the market values are too?
That's what, that's what the loan value is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just needed to, some clarification.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions? Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. Could you clarify a little bit of, of why there are particular split uh between these two programs, how that decision was made?
Um, they both have made, like I said, a, a significant input into Urbana projects and programs. And so we split it fifty-fifty, which is, you know, historically what we've done.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Not, I've got a few. Um, and Sheila, I think, I think we've already asked this a bit, but I'm still not quite understanding these non-targeted versus targeted areas. Um, because the way I'm interpreting this is that all those who are eligible for this assistance program would be households, like, for example, just look at one to two persons who have an income between eighty-four thousand and a hundred thousand a year are the, those who would be applicable, eligible for this program. Is that right?
So yes, what, uh, non-targeted areas, a one-or-two-person household cannot make over eighty-four thousand one hundred a year.
Okay. And then my other question was about um how this was promoted or recruited. Um, you know, like if, if there was an advertisement or these three happened to reach out to us proactively or what that looks like?
They, all three of them have uh reached out to us proactively, yes.
Okay. And have we done this in the past?
Um, yes. We do it, we do it every year at this time.
Okay. And did you say that we have to decide this by May of this year just to decide? Or that's when things need to be finalized or?
Things need to be finalized um and to the governor's office by May first. And if not, then they concede our cap to some, to a statewide project.
And does finalize just mean selecting like the allocation? Or does that mean like the bond already issued and everything by then?
Yeah, we don't issue the bond. There's um, like if, once you pass the resolution, if it goes through next week, um, then there's a cover letter that goes to the governor and uh uh certification that, that the mayor will sign that goes along with the resolution. And then that is sent off to the governor's office to show what our priorities are. So there's not actually bonds, like what you talked about last week. Those aren't actually issued on this project.
Okay, so you're meaning different than um like the Clark-Lindsey bonds that we saw?
Right, right. They are, this is totally different.
Thank you. I was confusing those. Thank you.
That's why I asked to put this on a different night, because it is confusing. And it's hard, you know, like Chris's question, it's, it's kind of like imaginary money. It never comes to the city if we do nothing with this. Um, it, it's not like we lose that four-point-five million in cash, but if we can designate it toward programs that can be used within the city limits, that's our goal.
And then one more too, the, so for the organizations receiving the funds, this is, in a sense, uh, like a no-interest loan to them, is that right? That it's, it's not through the city, it's more through the federal government, but it's
It's through the state of Illinois.
It's the state, okay. And so for the organization, is, is it essentially a no-interest loan or is it more of a
I don't know. I don't think it's cash that goes to them. I think it's like the mortgage credit certificate, it, it's um and I will verify this and send you a follow-up email, but it, it's reserved for that uh tax credit each year. So it's, it's all on paper. It's not like that assist program gets two-point-five million dollars to um David Roush, who manages this program. It goes into the Assist Illinois budget, and then as these loans are done, then that reserve is set aside.
Thank you. Chandra, did you have other comments? Questions or motion, I suppose?
Uh, yes, one, uh, one more question, just to clarify. So with the assist program, the, the potential homebuyer has to have, you know, their entire down payment or, and closing costs and all of that prior to for them to buy the home. So uh, so, and the, and then they get the credit back later. So essentially, like, they have to have the money in hand at that time. Am I understanding that correct?
Correct, or other grants. So a lot of times what you'll see, um, I just did a down payment program with BUCY where Urbana's portion of that was clipped to cover closing cost, um, because that's what the buyer needed. But they also got like a Federal Home Loan Bank grant of six thousand dollars, which helped with the down payment. And they got a, another grant from another organization for two thousand dollars. So a lot of the local lenders are really good at stacking these programs to really have the biggest impact on the buyers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or motion?
I'd like to move that, um, first of all, um, I'd like to move a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bonds, issues, single, a single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allocation assist program, series twenty, twenty-two. Um, be moved to city council on a consent agenda for approval. I'd also like to um move that the res- a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single mortgage family revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allocation, IDHD, I, I-HDA, series twenty-two-two, also be moved to the consent agenda for city council and that we omnibus, is that the correct term, that these two be omnibus? Um, um, go ahead, Diane, I know I'm
I know, I know it's tempting, but since there's only a total of two items, you'd have the same number of votes. So you should just vote on each individually.
Okay.
So you'll need a second for that.
I'll need a second for the first resolution.
I'll second for the first resolution.
Okay.
Clarify, this was the resolution two-zero-two-four-R, and Therese moved for approval on the consent agenda, seconded by Mary Alice. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm reading the title on the paper instead of the what's on the agenda, sorry.
Okay, and discussion, uh, Chandra?
I, I don't think we talked about the fifty-fifty part. Does, do we have to um, I guess, put in, into the resolution that it's fifty percent of this bond and then the other is fifty percent? Or is that decided now?
Yes, that's, it is stated in the resolution.
Other discussion? Yes, Jaya?
I, I think I'm, I'm a little stuck on the fifty percent part too, because I think, you know, one of our options seems more targeted at very low income, you know, addressing low-income needs for, for housing. Um, I, I guess I'm going to mull it over as we, we have this discussion. But I think knowing that this is something that comes up every year, having more time to make these decisions would be helpful as we're talking about allocation. Um, you know, I think, you know, having that tax credit for first-time home buyers, of course, is, is valuable. But we regularly hear from people who are having a hard time finding anywhere to live that's affordable to them. So um, I think that's, that, that breakdown is, is something I'm, I'm still mulling over a little bit, I guess is what I would say.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Mary Alice?
Um, I can, I can understand some of the comments about the breakdown. I would say this, I, I would say if there is um for our IDHA, if they have plans, if they want to have a bigger affordable housing um complex, uh, then I think that maybe we should have that conversation about in terms of what percentage distribution. But I do say that, you know, helping people buy their first home has a significant impact on um not only um how long somebody can live there, but um it's just proven that you can then transfer that wealth, uh, generational wealth and so forth. So I think that, at least for now, it makes a lot of sense to have this fifty-fifty split. But in the future, if there is some big affordable housing project, then maybe we can have that conversation about a, a different kind of split between these.
Thank you. And I had some, if Mary Alice would be willing to take the chair again?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Um, some of my thoughts would be, I would support having more of a recruiting or promotional activity around this. Um, I, I find it kind of strange that it's only like the three that reached out to us and not everyone who would be eligible for this knew about it or had the opportunity to um put in a request, especially since, um, you know, it looks like from the memo you gave us that nonprofits and other kinds of organizations could be eligible for this kind of thing. I would be interested in having kind of a round of open um applications, in a sense, instead of just kind of a if they know about it kind of system. Especially if it sounds, since it sounds like we have time to decide this, that there's no rush, that this has to be passed next week. I mean, I'm not saying to procrastinate, but it seems like there's not an immediate rush. We could have time for something like that possibly. I have concerns about the assistance program, um, because, I mean, if it doesn't serve anyone with a household of one or two people who make less than eighty-four thousand a year, for me, that just doesn't serve low-income residents. It only serves people who are above the median family household income in Urbana. And um, I don't see that it would necessarily make the difference of someone getting into a house or not. I think as Chandra pointed out, that you'd still need all of the financing. This would just be like a tax perk after the fact, which I agree can help with some other remodeling or refurbishing. Um, but I don't think that this would help make the difference between someone who's close to being able to afford their first home and not, and not really hitting the lower, mid or lower income range that I think would really need it more. So I would not support this being on the consent agenda. I think at least a regular agenda with some more information, especially since um Sheila said that she's going to give us a little more information about some of these things. Um, I would like to, at the very least, discuss it again next week. Like, that's all for now. Take the chair.
Take the chair, actually. I'll have a comment. It's okay?
Sure, yes, Mary Alice.
My, my understanding for the income limits is My my understanding for the income limits is a cap and Sheila, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So it's not that you have to make 84,000. But which way is the correct way to read that?
That's correct. That's a cap.
Okay, so that means that people who make less than 84,000 qualify for the program, but they can't make more if they're one or two people in the household, they can't make more than 84,000.
Yes, that's
In a non-targeted area. In a targeted area, they can't make more than 100,000.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
So the targeted, meaning if they're in a targeted area, not that that's the target income range, right? Okay, thank you. I wasn't saying that. Other discussion, Sharice?
Yeah, I was just going to point that out, what Mary Alice just pointed out. Also, when you're thinking about a one or two person home being built or or being purchased, that I think low income is exactly what you're hitting, actually, because you're saying that 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 neither of those people can make more than 50,000 in a tar in a targeted area. So that is low income. It's not, that's not medium. That's not that, you know, may maybe it was, it was, you know, middle class 30 years ago, but yeah, 50,000 isn't a lot for a person to live on anywhere nowadays in the United States. So that is definitely targeting the low income population. And as far as the non-targeted area, same thing. I wondered if you've got two people living in a house and you're saying that they can't make more than 42,000 a year. So I, you know, and and that money, what we're talking about is not monies that come to the city. We don't distribute. We don't do any of those things. That is for the lender to whoever they go to, to to go to get a loan. The lender is the person, this is my understanding. Sheila, correct me if I'm wrong, that the state allows for these particular credits or these particular programs and it to go to the lenders. We we have absolutely nothing to do with any monies that any of the people that will be getting a loan will be getting. The only thing that we are qualified or have to do is to say that, yes, we want our lenders to have this these opportunities for low income people buying their first home.
That's correct, Sharice, with the exception of that no cash goes to the lender either. It goes back to the home buyer at the time that they do their income taxes.
Yeah.
So kind of like the child tax credit, this is a home tax credit.
Thank you. Chandra?
Yes, I would I would agree by of putting this on the regular agenda for next week. So Sheila has the opportunity to give us further information such that is there demographic breakdown for those who are participants in the assist program? Is that something that the state tracks when the credit is returned?
No, we don't track demographic information on home loans.
Okay, because, I mean, we know that specifically in Champaign County, like minorities have difficulties getting loans. And so I'm just, I'm curious as to, you know, the participation of the of the program too. And I'd I'd also even, I mean, 50 50 split sounds good, but I I'm I would even be 60 40 for the Ida. But again, I'd like more information. You mentioned something about the the map of the actual targeted and non-targeted areas. So
Yes, I'll get you that.
Okay. Thank you. Jan?
Yeah, I I understood the the cap as as a cap, right? Like, that's the maximum. And that's why I was raising the question about loan amounts. You know, if we're looking at assistance levels of 80,000, 100,000, I can say for for my own home and the homes of many of my neighbors in Ward 4, our homes don't cost that much, period, right? So if we're talking about trying to reach low income, first time home buyers, I hear that that living on 50K is challenging in our community. I I don't deny that. But I think it's also important that we think about who's defining what low income is. The median household income in Urbana as of the as of 2019, according to the census, was 37,000 per capita income, 24,000, right? So this isn't about denying that the folks who are making 50, 80, 100K might need some support in buying their first home and that that's a benefit to our community, right? Investing in people who have more than just survival level income is still valuable. But as we are making the decisions of what does it mean to invest in housing for low income individuals, I think it is important that we think about how are we defining what low income is? Because there are many members in our community who 50,000 would be a real boon for them, right? If they were actually making that that level. I can say for much of my time living in this community, I was not making 50,000 living in this community. So it's not to deny the value of investing in in home buying for folks who might be making more than that. But also, as we are thinking about where that need is, I do think it's worth looking at more of that breakdown to see if there is unmet need for the people who are getting a median median income in Urbana, which is well below what we're we're talking about if we're talking about 50K or above.
Jan, I'm not sure, Jan, the census information that you're quoting. I'm just familiar with the HUD definition of median family income. So I will share that for next week's packet too, so that you can see with any of our federal programs, this is what HUD defines as low income and it's anybody below 80% of the median family. So for example, I know a single person household is roughly 40 some thousand, but I'll share the exact numbers with you next week. And then, you know, keep in mind too that Ida, they do tax credit projects, which are are aside from this. So Pinewood, they invested in it with with tax credits. And that just makes it affordable for people to invest in our community. So Bristol Place is a tax credit project. Crystal View is Highland Green is that some new developments that are have just recently applied on, like I said, Bradley and Lincoln are are for that particular project. If it goes through, it's for seniors, 66 units for affordable senior housing. And those tax credit limits are set by the state of Illinois too, and they are lower than the HUD definition. So there's a variety of ways that Ida invests in the community outside of of these bond caps too.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And there was talks about consent or regular. I didn't know if Sharice had any interest in changing the motion or anyone had interest in an alternate motion.
I guess it doesn't have to be on a consent agenda.
Mary Alice?
Second, I all agree with Sharice.
Okay, so now motion for regular agenda to city council with recommendation?
For approval.
Recommendation for approval, regular agenda by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. And it looks like no last discussion. Would clerk please call the roll for resolution 024R?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And then for 025R is the one related to I A. Sharice had kind of thrown out a partial motion on that one?
I'll do it again. Resolution number 2022 dash 03 dash 025R, resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single family mortgage revenue bonds and related mess matters. Private bond cap allocation IDHA series 2022 to be moved to city council for approval.
Is that for recommendation for approval on regular agenda?
Yeah.
Well, second that one.
Okay, seconded by Mary Alice. Thank you. Any discussion on this one, 025R? Okay, seeing none, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And next we have council input and communication. Any commission council members like to share? Yes, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that on the 21st and the 28th of this month, I will be traveling for work because we're currently meeting with Zoom that should not enter my participation, but at some point we should shift back to being in person. I would like to let you know that I need to participate remotely for the purpose of being out of town for work.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Are there any other council member input or communications? Uh, yes, Diane?
Just wanted to respond to a couple of comments from callers. First of all, a person asked about the committee on Community Advisory Committee on Public Safety. That purpose and that function has been rolled into the Public Safety Review, which is going to be a comprehensive review. Money's been allocated for that and the RFQ has request for qualifications for the consultant has gone out. So the proposed community safety review will be done and it's part of this overall citywide more comprehensive approach. It's taken a while, but but it's going to be done. And there was discussion about streetlights and we mentioned equal. And for viewers who may not know what equal is, there's we're still taking applications for the equity and quality of life, small scale neighborhood based infrastructure projects. So so if you are aware of needs in particularly underserved neighborhoods, whether it's sidewalks, streetlights, accessibility, that sort of thing, you can go to the website. On the homepage, there's a, I think it's under hot topics. You can just click on the link there and it will take you to the application. And particularly, projects like sidewalks and streetlights are very well suited for these small scale grants. We set aside an extra $2 million for the initial round of equal funding.
Thank you. Is there any other council input? Okay, seeing no others. Our next item is discussion. And before that, I would like to make a motion for five minute recess. And I don't remember if we second and vote on that as well, I think.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion second for five minute recess. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Hershey?
Um, yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And so we'll recess for five minutes. Be back at 9:10. Okay, it is 9:10. Hopefully we're coming back from our recess. Thank you to UP TV for putting up the information that we were on a recess for the public. And do we need a roll call to come back? I don't believe so, right? No roll call coming back from recess. Okay, so we'll go straight next into discussion. First, we have discussion on public input survey and plan for the ARPA concept plan. It looks like maybe Will's our presenter on this.
Yeah, thank you. I I'm here just for a quick update on the the public input plan for ARPA. So if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had the ARPA presentation for all the public input to date. And then the RPC drafted a public input plan for the input that'll get us to the conclusion of the public input phase. So I'll show my screen. I have a couple of slides and I'll go through them pretty quickly. And then I'll put them up on our website so that everybody can see them afterwards. Again, so this is just an update of the public input plan. I put the word additional here just to kind of, you know, underscore again, you know, kind of the what RPC did in their last presentation showing all the public input there's been done to date through all of our old plans, through the comprehensive plan process that's undergoing. So there's been a lot of input to date. But then the plan is for, you know, a little bit ARPA specific input to get us to the finish line. So just kind of remind everybody of the context of where we are. We're kind of at the end of phase one, which is highlighted in yellow of collecting that new input. And that'll lead us to the next phase of developing the concept plan. And then just to reiterate kind of the major touch points for the city council is we had our first meeting on the 24th. And then at the conclusion of the new public input is will be the next opportunity to kind of a big presentation. And, you know, from there, hopefully the guidance that presentation will lead into the drafting of the concept plan, which will then be presented in the third presentation to council. So kind of the gist of the public input plan is there's four major areas. There's the survey, which will be online and a paper version, and this will be live for about four weeks. There'll be public input at multiple committee, the whole and city council meetings. There'll be an in-person meeting as well for public input. And the goal is for that to be the week of April 4th. The exact day to be determined. And then there'll also be a website that kind of be stockpile for all the information and all the documentation going forward. So there's a lot of, you know, different ways that formats the risk of collecting input. And this graph kind of graphic that the RPC put together shows that each one has different requirements when it comes to time or availability. And it kind of shows with the different methods that we're doing, we're hopefully, you know, getting people who have different requirements on them, whether it's technology or time, to hopefully get it out to a diverse population. So the first component and kind of the major component is the survey. Now click on the link to show it to everybody in just a second, but the survey will be ADA web compliant. It'll be available in four languages and it'll be available to go live on the 14th. So the the English version is, you know, ready to go at any moment. But then, you know, the translation will take a couple of extra days. And at the very least, the survey will also be available in paper format at the locations you see. So when people enter the survey, they won't see the survey preview box, but you'll have the initial screen here. And then they'll be able to take a few questions about what the priorities are. And the required question being question number two, which is what is question number one? Is your relationship to the city of Urbana? Whether it's you live here, work here, own property, you can select all that apply. The second question is a ranking question for the five priorities that came out of the previous council discussion. These five should show up in a random order so that, you know, we're not, you know, influencing people's decision, you know, top one being first. So people will simply click on it and they'll fill it out in the order of their priority. Fill this one out to show you the next page since it's required. There's an opportunity for some more nuance and people can write specific things for question number three, if there's specific ideas or programs. And they can write them with the associated priority area. And then we also have a question for if there's other ideas that don't fit into those priorities, an opportunity for people to put that in there as well. Question number five is question asking for something a little more concrete, you know, some goals and objectives or outcomes, I mean. And those are some of the main questions that we're soliciting input on and And those are some of the main questions that we're soliciting input on. And then here, on the second page of the survey, we're just asking some demographic demographic information about the individual completing the survey. And all of these are optional. That's kind of the gist of it um real quickly. So I'll move on back to the slideshow. And then second part we'll have is some, I call it listening sessions here. Um so in our, in the previous meeting, council talked about the desire to have um a virtual opportunity for people to have public participation as well as an in-person one. Um and I think for just, you know, simplicity sake that people know that there's council meetings every Monday, uh the idea was to kind of break it up into each one of the 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 next subsequent four meetings, since we are still meeting virtual, and have some dedicated input time for ARPA at those meetings. Um I wrote down thirty minutes, although it certainly could be more. Um and then I think the idea is to have an introduction uh that will again to ask people to take the survey, just so we have some quantitative data um that's easily accessible, and then we can have some prompts um that can be spoken and as well as put on the agenda. Uh just, you know, similar to the survey questions to guide people in uh the kind of input that we're soliciting. Um and this is a tentative thing, which is um it's really up to you if you feel it's worthwhile before getting any input um or analysis of that input, uh we can put it in a um a discussion item on the agenda as well for those meetings concerning ARPA. Uh the in-person section, listening section, which is um again, the week of April fourth. Um there'll be a short introduction. Um the public input will be collected. We'll have a staff member at the city facilitate that. Um the idea is for it to be, you know, people's input to be time-limited, just so we can get through them. If there are a lot of people who want to speak then, um have the same prompts. And then something that RPC has done in the past is have had graphic recordings, so as people are talking, there's a graphic illustrator who will kind of write word bubble um diagram and kind of, so and there'll be a visual at the end that kind of shows what people's thoughts and ideas were. Um there'll be posters there to help get relay some information, and then there'll be paper surveys as well for people to take. The RPC also created a website. Um website has some information now, and I'll show it to you briefly. Uh but as we create more and more information, uh we'll add more and more information to that website. Sanford should be glad that I'm getting prompts uh whenever I'm clicking links, um but I didn't read the fine print. And then, so here you'll see the RPC's um, you know, website that they put together, which there are a couple of main major tabs, which, and then this will also have a link to the survey as well um after today, but you have some background information which you can click through and read more about it, as well as the process and some of the public involvement. With that, the next step was to be launched, the public input phase, where we'll um we'll, you know, let it, put the survey on our city website. Uh the ARPA project website that RPC created will go live. Um we can put out the survey links in social media. Um and then if, you know, if you want it to send to anyone, um you know, you'll have the survey link to send to anybody with neighborhood groups. Um, you know, and all of that, and these are some um just, I think, people identified earlier. And that's um the kind of the whole of the plan. And again, kind of going back to one of the earlier slides, you know, this, the public input, new public input phase, um will kind of end around the first week of April then. And then RPC will do some analysis of that public input, and then we'll build, have a presentation to the City Council after that. And so that's all I have for the update. It's relatively short, but we wanted to share what you, with you, what the plan was for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for the presentation. Um take questions from council members, and it looks like Diane has something to add to.
I just wanted to ask Barima to add Ashley McLaughlin as a panelist. She's here from the RPC, and she can answer questions, too.
Thank you. Uh questions from council members? Yes, James?
I I did want to make a observation about the survey. Uh you said that that demographic information at the end was optional. Um that it might be more clear if there, each of those items had a had a checkbox that said prefer not to share or something to that effect. That may have been up at the top that said all of these are optional, but just relying on the on that, I think uh is is probably not quite enough to make people understand that they don't have to share that information to participate.
Thank you. There are questions or discussion? This is, I guess, really just a discussion thing, so it doesn't, just questions. Apologize for that. Yes, Jia.
Um I actually just have another quick question related to the demographic information. I appreciate it's the end so that people can get through the survey and then decide if they're making that decision. But just because it went by quickly, um I didn't see like for race and ethnicity, were there options to check multiple boxes? I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm seeing a nod from Ashley. Um and then I was just wondering if if um if it, if there's an option to offer something than other, perhaps not listed, uh literally as othering to people, to ask them to choose a race that is listed as other gender identity.
I think was actually worded really nicely of um creating more of an open space, so just a a suggestion in terms of inclusion.
Could you restate that? I'm sorry, I think I missed the first part.
Sure. So in terms of listing race, you have a number of categories listed, and then there's an other option. Um and quite frankly, a lot of people who don't, you know, get, see themselves in those racial categories feel othered, right? You know, you're actually asking them to identify as other, and so something more inclusive, like not listed, might just be a little bit more.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary Ellis?
Um Ashley, there is a little bit of brief discussion in terms of asking people to put um kind of the intersection in terms of where they, where they live. I didn't know if there is a decision in terms of why that was not on that list, or maybe I missed it.
It is on the list. It might just be at the bottom of the page. I might not have scrolled down, but the question is um to ask people to list the I think it's which two streets intersect closest to your home. Okay, thank you.
Are there questions or discussion? Chandra?
I had two things. Wha- what you just said about the intersection for your, of your home. Um but the first question is, do you live, do you work, or own property, or whatever in Urbana? So could, should we change home to, I don't know, to be inclusive of like, they have a business or own property or whatever it is? Um and then second, are the paper surveys going to be available in other languages, or the other language is just going to be online?
The paper surveys will also be available in the four languages. Um and I think I missed your first point about the, about the home versus work.
Uh I think the first question is listing how you are related to Urbana, whether you live here or work here or um own property or run a business or something. And then the question was what inter, what two streets intersect where it closes to your home? So maybe not home, or I don't know how you would phrase it if they were a business owner and and it's not their home.
I see what you mean. Yeah, that's a good question. I had not thought about that. Our goal with that one was mainly for residents of Urbana to know, to make sure we're getting responses from um a good geographic selection of the city. Um but that could be relevant for businesses as well. We will think about that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Uh yeah, um thank you for the presentation. Um what happens if we only get a hundred people to respond? Is this going to be able to be extended? I'm assuming it would.
Um I can give further a will if you have a response to that.
Yeah, I mean, so there's nothing that prohibits it from um being extended. Um that just, it, you know, extend the timeline to get to the concept plan. So um whatever input there is, you know, RPC has to take it, digest it, um you know, so we can have something meaningful from it. Um, you know, I think, you know, the, you know, we don't want to, you know, have too much out there, and you know, I think. Um so it's possible, um but there are associated kind of outcomes from that, which um, you know, I think the desire to kind of move through this process quickly, you know, that's kind of the the kind of the cost, that benefit of extending it.
Other questions or discussion? Uh I have a question. If you could just um remind us the city website about this, because I I believe the city does have a nice website with all these kinds of resources together, and then the survey posted there soon. Is that correct?
Yeah, the the city has a website. Um I'm not looking at the URL, so I can't read off, but we will have a link to the um the RPC's website, as well as a survey directly on our website as well. So you don't have to click through six links to find the survey. Um if you find our website first, um you'd be able to click on the survey there as well.
Any other question or discussions? Okay, seeing none, we'll end this discussion topic. Thank you, Will and Ashley, for coming and giving us a thoughtful update. Next item is continuing conversation on council goals by council members Wilkin and Colacetti. And I didn't know if, Jia, if you're interested in a few words starting us off here?
Sure. Um and I, this is again, just a starting of a discussion. I know the the process of setting the goals is, has been quite a process. Um but I think one of the trends that we keep seeing is that it ends up feeling rushed, and then there's not that time to take that big picture step back as we're trying to finalize things, and that there are some challenges with trying to make sure that all council members are hearing um what others are sharing. And so just wanted to bring up the idea of continuing or hopefully wrapping up the conversation hopefully soon, um but during our council meetings, right? Uh trying to schedule all these additional meetings and um running out of time, we keep seeing these goals inching along, and I I understand it takes so much staff time to, you know, be at those extra meetings. And so really just wanted to create that opportunity to discuss whether it felt viable to continue this conversation during council. And Grace, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that.
I think we're about this time. I'll I'll keep chairing for now and uh take a discussion from other council members, and then I definitely have things to add eventually. Uh Mary Ellis?
Um so i- it, my point or perspective is, is that we have absolutely taken quite a bit of time to um go over these goals and and so forth. And I think that um, I think that it's not going to be perfect, right? So we're going to have to live with what do we think we can accomplish in year one and year two? Um given that, you know, maybe things will change, given certain information that arises. And so I'd really like to see us uh at least get something down right now. Let's, let's help staff, um let's help us like focus on what are some of the key priorities that we want to do. And so, so from my perspective is, is I would like to see this move to uh the committee so that we can have that that overall discussion, and then it move to council. And that's, that's from my perspective what I would like to see.
Yes, Jia?
Yeah, I'm certainly not saying let's drag this out unnecessarily by any means. I think we we'd all like to see these actually set. Um but even from coming in towards the the end of the last meeting, you know, I I wasn't able to be there for much of it because I had a conflict. Um again, we were rushed on really important topics, and again, we did not have time to take that step back. And my concern is if we keep saying, well, you know, let's put it on the agenda, it comes here. There isn't consensus in terms of our understanding of what, where we are with that process, and then we end up having to schedule additional meetings. So I actually agree with you, Mary Ellis, that we need to move this along, but I I guess I have a different perspective in that I didn't feel like we got to a point where we ever did that step back and to say we have these different categories now, what is actually feasible in the next two years? And that needs to happen. So we don't just have this amorphous list that has not been prioritized or been set to the si- like same standards, even in terms of duration versus timeline. Those conversations were still happening in that last meeting.
James?
Yeah, and and I will, I will agree with Jia from a perspective of um even at the end of that last meeting, there there's a place where I want to look at the whole of everything written down. And we we know what we said at that meeting, but did we see it all written down a a lot with all the stuff that we had written down beforehand? And um that is from a standpoint of making sure the or, you know, the order implies priority in some circumstances. And so making sure that order uh either means that that implies priority or adjusts it if it doesn't mean priority. Um and and the other the, I I I think this is the the job of mostly of staff to look at what's in there and say if, how the resource contention for these, I I say mostly because I know there are some things that we have kind of said council can help with this, or the mayor can help with this. There's a few of those things. So it's not all staff's responsibility, but I want staff to have that opportunity to look at this holistically and say, you know what? You put eight things on this department, and you're going to have to figure out which of those, you know, three of those things aren't going to happen in year one. And so that means it's either year two or later. That that's the kind of holistic moment that I don't feel like I've had from a standpoint, and and not in the sense of, you know, I'm not really I'm not into like going down and do the complete Gantt chart of this one's going to follow this one and this one. You know, the the whole picture of that. I think I really truly believe that that is um uh staff's work to advise us on. Um but I I still, I still agree that we have not had that moment of here's the whole picture. Did we, do we have the right things or are they in the right order, and how are they going to come, you know, conflict against each other? Um and I, and I think that's us, and I think there's some staff input, too, that that remains to be done for that.
Thank you. Uh, Mary Ellis, would you mind taking the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair. Would you like to be recognized, Grace?
Please. Thank you. Um so I think one of the motivations for me in having a discussion here is I agree with what's been previously stated of looking at the priorities and things as a whole to kind of wrap up. There's also a few specific things that I would still like to have on the table officially, and I felt like at the last planning session, there wasn't the opportunity to put them on the table. Um I've emailed council members and staff individually with these, but I just wanted to have it out there for the public and throw them on the table. Um a few would be like for economic development. I would support moving up item D about the grocery store incentives. Um because we have priorities of a hotel and a new cannabis dispensary above the those, and I would support moving that up, for example. Um I've sent a few other questions and small kinds of word things. Um a bigger thing would be also under Public Safety Strategy to enhance and expand public safety. I would like to propose an action item of um explore how to enhance and expand alternative emergency response models for mental health crisis and domestic disputes. Uh we have the CCRT model we've been getting updates on. Um it seems like the idea was kind of moving to a real-time, more holistic kind of approach. So I think it would be good to make that an action item, just to have it be written down and kind of on our to-do list. So those are um a few of the things I've sent, you said emails with other specific items, but I just wanted to be able to have those ideas, have a chance on the table to be considered. And I will be happy to take the chair back.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Chris?
Oh yeah, Grace. I I just want to add to your list of alternative responses under public safety, uh drug and alcohol, uh abuse situations, however that's written, but I would just add that to your list.
Thank you. Uh other council discussion? Yes, Mary Ellis?
So I I know I've had this conversation with a couple of people before. I just, I do really feel like we've, we've asked the um the city to do a comprehensive review of public safety, and I think that one of the things will come out of that review are suggestions on how to enhance that safety. Um so I feel like we will have some strategy in some areas, and I think we will end up looking at those responses to that and prioritizing those. So I think that everybody would agree that um expanding or looking into alternative responses is something that will probably um come to light during that review, but I think that having a specific goal here um is really unnecessary because having a specific goal here is really unnecessary, because I think we're going to go through that prioritization process when we have a list of different things that we need to do. And, and so that's, I, I just think that that D is unnecessary.
You, Jaya?
I actually feel like this discussion is showing why we still need to have a discussion, right? I think that in some ways we have a lot of pieces of what we've said our goals are going to be established, but the fact that we're still saying, well, do we need to add more items? Are we taking ones on? Are we taking them off? To me shows the need for, for these conversations, right? Because when you're at a small table and you're primarily only talking to a few other council members, the interpretation of, of how we are saying those goals are, are going to be implemented, I think that, that can get lost. And I do think that this is exactly why it is valuable to continue to have this conversation until we have those really tightened up so that as we are asking staff to take on these projects, we're really clear about what we're asking them to do and that we're not continually adding, well, here's another piece, here's another piece, here's another piece.
You, other input? Yes, Chandra?
I'd be all for having this discussion, you know, of, at the end of ongoing council meetings, because this is a working document. I think even we have our, our overarching goals set, but I think those sort of strategies sometimes will move depending on what staff says that they can or cannot do. So I think having this item as a continued discussion item on upcoming agendas, you know, that couldn't hurt to discuss this five or 10 minutes at a time, just after getting feedback from, you know, staff after we give them any updates or anything. I would like to see sort of like the final, more final draft after our discussion on the 22nd. I thought maybe it would, you know, be in this week's packet, but I would, I would just love to see sort of like that finalized version that we can look at it and say, yes, this is, this is actually all the things that we did discussing, you know what? It, it is in here. So, you know, who's to say we may not need many of these, but, you know, I, I think looking at that final document in its entirety would help.
Yes, Dan?
If that's what you would like staff to do, then we need direction for that. People have, we've been holding off producing a final document because number one, a discussion item was put on this week's agenda again for further discussion. So if you are prepared or ready for staff to finalize the goals as you develop them on the 22nd and what, based on this discussion tonight, then, then that can happen and then you'll have something to react to and work from. The other thing to think about is the strategic areas, the four strategic areas you've identified for city goals are also four of five areas for ARPA funding and the public is going to get very confused if we're talking about ARPA allocations and council goals and how, and it's not clear how all those are going to fit together. So it's important to finalize the goals and then they will form a foundation for ARPA allocations in connection with all the additional input that we expect to get over the next few weeks. So if you're, if you're ready for a final goals or a draft goals document, we can pull together the input from the five goal-setting sessions that were held and that'll be what you can work from. Does that make sense? It won't be the final document. It'll just be the overall, there weren't many changes based on what came out of the last couple of goal-setting sessions, except to the public safety one, that was a little bit more fleshed out. So you're pretty close, actually.
Jaya?
Yeah, so again, to reiterate, the, the goal is not to continue to drag this process out unnecessarily, but rather to, to take that step back. I think, you know, we've been seeing the progress that these, these are important conversations to have and, and at least from my perspective, yes, seeing where we are, right? Having the most recent version would be, I think, the foundation for the next conversation and it could well be that we take one meeting and we're like, all right, we're all on the same page, now we can confirm that and we're good. That would be wonderful, but I think that we haven't done that yet. And so making sure that that is actually done is important. I think it does a disservice to the residents of Urbana to suggest they can't tell the difference between different sessions, as long as we are very clear about what topics we're discussing. And of course, there's going to be overlap between our goals for the next two years and for our funding priorities for ARPA, because we are responding to a time of pandemic in both instances. So absolutely, we need to be clear, but I think both are essential and important for us to have clearly articulated for everybody's sake.
All right, well then, we will get the draft council goals put together and get it to a committee of the whole meeting.
Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair again, please?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mary. I appreciate having a most recent update. In a time like this, would be reviewing all five sessions and changing it. The way I see it, we were already, you know, had.
The last document that, the working draft that's dated as of January 6th, 2022 was, was the basis for what you were working from, actually on February 22nd, but you, you focused mainly on public safety on that date. The other, the other goals that have been developed really weren't modified. So we'll, we'll go with that working draft, update it based on what happened after the meeting on the 22nd and bring that back to you. So it should be a pretty close to a finished set of goals. At least it'll be something, it'll form the basis for the discussion.
So, um, yes, I think all that needs to be added is just whatever updates that were from the last session and I'm not clear what those are, so I would definitely appreciate having those compiled. And as you said, I think you're saying not for final approval, but for an update on the most recent draft for a next discussion item.
Well, it would come to a committee of the whole meeting, yes. And then, and you can keep it in committee as long as you need to.
As an approval item, not a discussion, right, is what you're saying?
Well, if, if it's in committee, it's, it's there for you to discuss and if you think it's in a form that can be moved on to council for final approval, you can do that or you could keep it in committee for further discussion.
Okay. Yes, I would definitely appreciate discussions on items. That's what I've heard from other council members. And then I was also just kind of struggling with how we're making decisions on these kinds of things. Like it seems like a lot of times one person says something, one person says they don't agree and then it's kind of like, where does that leave it? We haven't really been like voting on items, so I'm just kind of wondering if we're going by like consensus or full agreement or just whoever happened to say it and whoever happened to write it down as being a valid suggestion versus another. So I'm kind of confused about how we're deciding what ideas get like approval or not. And then also I agree with Jaya that I think the public is intelligent enough to decipher when we're talking about ARPA goals and council goals, they are definitely a lot of overlap in a lot of those four areas, but I wouldn't like to assume the public's confusion as a reason for not continuing the discussion to the level that a lot of council members have expressed wanting to do. That's all and I'd be happy to take the chair back, Mary Alice.
All right, and I relinquish the chair to Grace.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, Jaya?
Just wanted to quickly, as we're, we're talking about how complex this process has been and, and how there is still a piece, right, that we still need to do, just to take a moment to recognize Carolyn Williams for their facilitation of the last session, for Kevin James and for all of the staff who've been part of framing this and, you know, devoted so much of their time and attention to this effort. It is by no means taken for granted that, you know, that level of attention and, and work that folks have put into this, this, rather than, you know, the point is to say, all right, this deserves to be wrapped up, right? And so let's get it wrapped up where we can do that, you know, 50-foot view and actually say, okay, what is actually feasible in the next couple of years? And I think having this opportunity to take that step back and then hear from staff so that we're not asking too much is really important and I, I certainly anticipate and hope that it is true that we see all of that input that staff have devoted so much time to reflected in, in what we come up with as we finalize things.
Thank you. James?
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that there is a, there were some of this done at the last meeting, but there is a certain amount of, of lack of checking in on, on items that are proposed. There were, there was some of that at the last meeting. There were moments where the consultator was saying, who, who agrees with this and who doesn't agree with this? In some cases, it was clear, in some cases, it was not as clear. I think we have to accept, well, I, when I hear an idea that I like, I, I tend to like speak up and be supportive of it. Sometimes I hear an idea where I'm not sure and I'm thinking about it, so I'm not immediately in or out, but frequently, you know, emotions die for the lack of a second. So I think when, when you're trying to steer the big picture by adding things to it or changing things after we've invested in it and nobody like jumps on board, it may be that nobody wants to change it that way, that it, that they feel like it's good enough. If we don't check in, we don't know that for sure. And I, I think we owe that to anyone who puts an idea out there to say, you know, are we, are we in on this? Are we not sure or are we out?
Any other discussion? Yes, Chandra?
So will we be able to get the draft of the document prior to the next Cal meeting? Because I want to make sure I have time to like really.
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay, so.
It's going to take a while. I mean, the same people working on ARPA now are also working on these draft goals. So, you know, it's, it's, we don't have separate staff people doing these things. So that's one of the, it, one of the motivations to, to finalize these, so then the focus can be on ARPA. But no, you would have it before the, in your packet at least.
Well, I meant, okay, just maybe as soon as possible, even before.
Absolutely. It won't be this week, I can guarantee.
That's fine. Okay.
But it would be for a committee meeting and, and again, you know, you can keep it in committee as long as you need to, to, to work out.
I would love to see this wrapped up by the end of the month, honestly, just, I mean, we have three more meetings this month. Like if we can get it to a good firm place by the end of the month, at least, then we can sort of start implementing them.
That would be the goal.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So if I could just clarify, let me know if it's now Kaya's chair, kind of where we're leaving this discussion for tonight, sounds like the mayor and staff will work on the most recent update and then that will be sent out in the packet or to council as soon as possible. And then that would be an item in a committee of the whole agenda for approval in the committee to decide how to move from there. Is that general understanding with head nods of leaving this discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further input on this discussion item? Seeing none. That is our last item for tonight and we call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.